Good morning, and welcome to our commission meeting for the sixth of August 2025. And we'll all stand for the pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Fournette.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, ever being protested or altered.
Alright, let's get started with our new assessor.
Exonerations for you, little bit more than usual, only because when the bills first come out, that's when everybody realizes their bill is wrong and they come in for us to correct it. That's just simply how we corrected. This is a correction of assessment. We've had an issue with the state producing some zero value tax tickets for our oil and gas and our minerals. This lady wants to pay her tax ticket, so we're going to give her a value assessment on that. And I should have two orders for credit as well in your packet.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve our exoneration.
A second.
Here we have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The assessment.
Correction for assessment, yes.
I'd like to move before we approve the correction of assessment. I'll second. And motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Thanks. Yeah. And do you all have those orders for credit to sign as well?
Everybody. Do you have credits, Ruth?
I have the, um, I think one of them.
We are going to start doing credits. I know we've done refunds in the past, but it's easier for the tax office to just do a credit and refund. So we've come to the conclusion that from now on, if all in all possible, we will be doing credits instead of refunds.
I don't like that idea to do credits instead of refunds. I think if we overcharge somebody, we should give them their money back.
And I agree with you, but it's difficult for Terry on her system to get the refund to come out correctly. So I can discuss that with her and see what she says, but if it's not possible, we would have to go with the route of credit. But if it is possible, we can do refunds.
I think for me, I'd like you guys to figure out what we need to do to make it possible. So if she, if she needs some kind of system upgrade or some kind of augmentation to her system, you know, we should consider that.
Okay, I will make sure I discuss that with her.
Thank you.
Welcome. Yes, there's two behind it that need to be signed.
There's two.
Yes.
The other person has, um, assessor name, who gives the one?
Sue Wilson or John Wilson, yeah.
So we could order that they all sign with the care system instead of. So if it's all through, but we'll go anything. But the other two are dependent on, he wasn't signing those yet, on Terry.
I move that we approve the credits.
Well, but we're going to look into refunds, right?
Well, for these two, we've already got the orders written up, so I would recommend that we go ahead and give these individuals their credit. Because the one has been waiting for almost a month now, and then in the future, when we have the situation pop up, we could potentially do some refunds.
What is the amount, though, of money?
Um, for Wilbert, it's $2,154.12, and for Sue Wilson, it was, is it written on there? It should be.
Oh, Wilbur.
Yeah, here's where I'm coming from. If, if these people would prefer, if they want a credit, then fine. But if they would prefer a refund, I would like them to be eligible for a refund, if that's what they want.
Are they complaining, Ruth, about the credits? Are these kids, either one of these kids complaining about credit or refund?
Well, mine was listed later, tried to refund again.
Yeah, the Wilsons were fine. I think it was Wilbert that wanted the refund.
And that's a lot of money, so I can understand why he would.
Wilson is $1,420.09.
Yeah.
And Lybri is $2,000.09.
Okay, so if you want to go ahead and approve Wilson, since they were fine with the credit, we can work on Wilbert's and see if we can do a refund for him, if that's how we want to do that.
Yeah, I, I, I think that'd be great. I mean, if the Wilsons, if we know they're fine with a credit, then, you know, we'd go ahead and do that.
Okay, we can certainly do that.
I revise the motion to move to approve Wilson's credit.
And a refund?
Of $1,420.09.
A second.
There's two motions, second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Allison, is it okay if we stamp your name?
Yes, please, and, and that's true for whatever we approve, unless I object.
Alright, any questions on vouchers and invoices?
Nope, they look good this time to me.
I move that we approve the vouchers and invoices.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve payroll for August the eighth.
Second.
Okay, a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye. The minutes aren't ready, John. I received them on Monday and I've been out of town, as you know, so I wasn't able to edit them.
Okay, um, estate settlements?
I move that we approve the estate settlements.
I'll second. We have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Fiduciary recommendation of state Rosemary Ward.
Is Mr. Tissue there?
I don't see him.
Michelle's here.
Michelle, do you want to just? Give the public an idea what this is about? Or do you want me to do it?
Basically, this estate was referred to the fiduciary commissioner because of an objection to the appraisement and to the admittance of the will. Mr. Tissue has recommended that a, an amended appraisement be filed, including some other items, and that the contest of the will is a matter for circuit court, not for the commission. So if she, if the complainant wants to contest the actual will itself, she'll have to go through circuit for her.
But Ms. Martin has contested that the will is invalid and clotting?
That, that is what she is contesting.
But it sounds also like she could, she was concerned that not everything was listed on the appraisement of the estate and that Mr. Tissue did, um, come to a, an agreement between the parties on that, that they are going to amend the appraisement. So that might end her contest. If it, you know, if it gets resolved, she may not contest the will as long as the estate's handled fairly. And I don't know what happened in the hearing, but that's kind of how I read the recommendation.
And that is, that is my interpretation as well.
Okay, so I, I move that we approve the recommendation of the fiduciary commissioner and allow the, um, appraisement of the estate to be amended.
I'll second it. Here we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Ruth?
So the first thing, we have two requests. Anthony has asked that, I think his is listed first. His candidate is on the phone. Ruth, is he on the phone?
Jonathan Calhoun neither.
Jonathan, thanks for attending, um, and we're excited to have you back to Fayette County.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited and thankful for the opportunity.
And you know that I in particular understand your, your skill set and I am, you know, when Anthony told me you applied, I was very happy for us. So, welcome back.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to work with you all.
Okay, so I move that we approve the hire Jonathan Calhoun for the prosecuting attorney's office as presented by Mr. Stiller-Birdy to the commissioners.
We have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, request approval to hire three. We just tested a few months ago with five down. As of yesterday, we had one turn in a notice. We'll be six down. We got an individual, we got a state police. We were fortunate enough to get three qualified individuals out of that last testing slot. That list has expired, but we were fortunate enough to get these three and they passed everything from the test psychological, background investigation, polygraphs, they, they went through everything. I was originally, the, the notice I sent you guys, I was requesting to start them on the ballot, however, we got a little bit of a conflict there with court and, uh, our schedules, their schedules getting them swarmed, so we, we were able to, to get a, a slot this Friday, get the approval of Judge James to get them swarmed. And we could get them to start Friday. Uh, the good thing about that is, is, is we feel very confident talking to the state police academy because, you know, they're not, they, they can't do a whole lot if they're certified and then go to our FTO program. Um, the next academy class starts in two weeks and it looks like we'll be able to get them here, which is, which is phenomenal. Yeah, so if we can, if we can get that done as quickly, then we'll be, we'll be in decent shape to contest again.
Do any of them have previous law programs?
One of them is Thomas walkers, one of our transport officers. He's a, a former Marine. He's been in our, our transport division for a while now. He's a, he's one we're going to hire. Another one, Tanya Berry, is a, she's a former CPS state worker. Uh, she worked in the state system for quite a while. Um, and then the other gentleman is, uh, Logan Gilm. He's a, he's local and he currently works in Raleigh County, the city of Beverly, Raleigh County. So not a whole lot of law enforcement experience, but a little bit of knowledge of what, you know, to expect. So hopefully we can get them to the academy and get them through our program because we will not turn loose until they FTO with us. And maybe, maybe by spring, the start of next summer, we can have these guys ready to work.
I don't know the other two, but I know Tanya is an excellent investigator. I worked with her. She was in what they call an intake worker at CPS where they do the initial investigation of the child abuse and neglect. And she is very thorough. She's on it. She has great work ethic. I'm excited that she applied with us. Yes, I know she's at 911 now and, you know, Tanya might be upset with you, but I'm excited that she's gone to be a deputy.
Definitely true.
So, well, I move that we approve the three hires. I think they look good. Their backgrounds came back. Now, I'm excited you found three candidates qualified.
We're fortunate to, with, with the amount that we have show up for testing now, but we've got three, so that's a good thing. But, yeah, we're pretty excited.
Okay, I'll second. We have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks. Uh, if y'all are interested, they will be swearing in Friday at 11:00 a.m.
11:00.
In, uh, Judge James' chambers. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Ruth?
The next is the fire department bid checklist. You guys post them in the comment.
I don't have any problem with it. You, I think it was very well done by the, one of our staff members, one of our new staff members.
Are you talking about the, the bid?
Yes, yes, Allison, the commission title. Talk about the bid process for the fire department.
Oh, it wasn't just for the fire departments, was it, Ruth?
Yes. I mean, we can use it anywhere, but that's why it was drafted originally.
Okay, the, you saw my only two changes, right?
Back for five.
Oh, did you? Because I didn't get that right. Nope, yeah, you sure did. Hold on just one second. Okay, so I, I just wanted some of the, some of the word, like the wording about what we put on our agenda to be removed. And, um, the other thing is, I would like there to be, um, more of a, I don't know, a process about how we come up with the three RFPs that we sent out. Those were the two comments I had on it. Um, but I think we can, we can go ahead and pass it as it is and then we can further flesh that out. We just get rid of the, that wording on the, putting a ward on our agenda, which we can do. And then the other thing we can flesh out as a part of our procedures, how we identify the three we send the RFPs to.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the bid project checklist for the fire departments.
Second.
The motion is second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have two hazard mitigation lease leases, strike and stop.
Okay. And they're aware that they can't put any fences or anything like that on the property? Okay. Any questions on the mitigation for the property lease?
No, I move we approve them.
John, the notification portion for your signature today is.
Yes, we will remember. Yeah, so Allison, we need to amend the, um, signature for the notary.
Well, we need to amend the notification, not for signature. We just need to, we're going to have somebody here at the courthouse notarize John's signature. We just need to change who the notary is, when the commission expires. This says your signature was, um, added on July 15th. We just need to correct that.
Uh, Michelle, are you in?
We're swishing.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and Amy is too, but Michelle usually notarizes our stuff.
Okay. So Michelle, we're going to need you to notarize some things.
Yeah, she's the clerk of this court.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the leases.
And we got the same issue on the second one. Just need to correct the other information. The date for your signature needs corrected as well.
Add Anthony's statements to my motion. Yeah, I second.
Second, I withdraw the motion I made. Same.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So the next item, you guys have a support letter to the model group. You need to put it on the front page. It was due last, this 31st.
31st, yeah.
This is just for a grant application, no money. Second.
Here we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
And also for the grant application that was due last week for the shooting in property, not for.
I move we approve the, uh, the bank of mine, uh, one last meeting.
Second.
We have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Six.
The opioid settlement document, Allison, you had emailed.
Yeah, Mike Wolford recommends that we sign this. This is just more settlement money in the negotiations. Um, but obviously, um, I hadn't, none of us were individually authorized to approve it, so I asked Ruth to put it on the agenda so we can vote. So I move that we approve the opioid settlement and have John sign the documents.
It's, it's an electronic signature, so it comes in office and.
Second. Have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven.
So a New Haven PSD board member, a coin boat, we had one application for availability that is upcoming. You have his application?
Yes.
Definitely, uh, Purvis?
Purvis Major.
Major?
Yes.
And he lives here?
Yeah.
We, game, that is, we sort of think too, whatever he'd like to do.
Do you have anything to say as per purpose?
Yeah, you working up?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Since you put him on the spot, John.
Yeah, what am I going to say? No?
We would like to hear from him.
Hi, Purvis Major, 20-year resident of Fayette County, grew up in Morgantown, us Virginia. Yeah, um, my reason for moving here was the, uh, outdoor opportunities and spent a lot of time here as a youth, as a raft guide and mountain biker, climber. Enjoyed the location, made my family home here. Uh, we have a small business in the county and, uh, my wife works in Nicholas County for the health department. So, uh, um, I'm applying for the this position because I feel like the PSD serves an important role in our community. And we have a lot of growth going on and this is key to us moving forward. There's good quality water and sewer and the folks that are trying to operate on well water are certainly struggling. Not only is there scarcity of water, but the quality of water we can pull from the ground is not good. Requiring significant investments in private filtration systems just to be able to offer. And this is how the reach of most people. So I feel like I need to contribute. I see this as an opportunity to get involved. So unless there's any questions, I'm not that much more interested.
No, thank you very much. We appreciate you stepping up.
Okay.
Well, I'll also say that Mr. Major has been very active in, in other community projects as a volunteer. So, um, I really appreciate him stepping up with his skill set and his activism to get involved in, in that very important project. Because, um, you know, after Kenny retired, we, we really need to get a strong board in place to make sure these projects are seen through. So I move for, that we appoint, uh, Purvis Major to the New Haven PSD board.
Okay, here we have a motion second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Major.
So he is tax effect, once the other guy's gone, right? Because I guess it's effective at the next meeting.
That's correct. Right, number nine, I, I think that, uh, we need to go into executive session for that. Yeah, let's, uh, let's go ahead and go through these other two things and then we'll come back to that.
Okay.
NRG towns request for support letter.
Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, thanks, Commissioner, for letting me be here and I'm a little under the weather, so I'm going to have my coffee in case I get choked up. My name's Stacy Henderson. I'm with the West Virginia Community Development Hub. I've been before the commission a couple of times because I've been working with, uh, Smithers, Montgomery and Oak Hill for the last two and a half years. You guys probably remember, I came in December and you, uh, to talk about a project, a collaborative project that Smithers, Oak Hill, Montgomery, uh, were doing together with some technical assistance money we provided them. You guys were kind enough to add some additional funding to that. And, uh, that initiative has, has grown into something actually quite amazing. So, um, through your all's support, um, the energy, the wayfinding, branding and marketing initiative, had support from several, several other Fayette County communities beyond Smithers and Montgomery. And I think this is, uh, due to the collaborative nature of the community members involved and really trying to create, um, some cohesion in the county. And April, April and May, the communities talked about what this could look like long-term of wanting to try to create an initiative called NRG towns, similar to the Monfort's towns initiative, uh, and the, uh, Monfort's part of the state, PA Wiles, which is initiative in Pennsylvania. Basically, an initiative to bring together, uh, the communities across the four county region for a collaborative partnership. We had an exploratory meeting at Adventures on the Gorge in June and had great support from several of the communities and some partners and, um, promised to keep looking at opportunities to move this forward. Um, about a month ago, one of those opportunities kind of came to fruition and USDA came out a funding opportunity for, uh, their rural community development initiative. Um, and we talked to the communities and decided to, to apply for this. So, um, we've, in the last 30 days, put together a, a federal grant application. It's due tomorrow with 11 communities across four counties. So, uh, if nothing else, you should appreciate our determination. Um, this initiative would, it, it's more than a branding or marketing initiative. That would certainly be part of it. But this is really, um, to create a, a collaborative or a partnership across the four county region. We have 11 communities signed on. We offered to every, every incorporated community across the four county region. We have, I think, eight in Fayette County. We have Somersville, Nicholas County, Bethley in Raleigh County and Hinton in Somers County have all signed on. I will say that the two communities we weren't able to get in Fayette County were Metta Bridge and PAX. We tried, they just said they didn't. See, the, the reasoning right now, we're not going to close the door to them. Um, you know, we'll, we'll keep that, that invitation extended. Um, if, if we're awarded this funding, uh, over the next three years, we would work to create this structure and governance for this partnership that would be led by the communities. Um, we have support from WVU Extension, Warren Weatherford, the local extension office here, um, NRG RDA, The Hive, West Virginia Outdoor Development Collaborative. We've been working closely with the Energy Ride Center Initiative to align some of the things that they're doing. And honestly, there's a lot of, there's a groundswell of momentum around this and we feel like that this is an opportunity for us to convene the communities, uh, to, you know, create this regional effort. As you guys know, funding and opportunities are becoming harder and harder and thunder's like regionality. We're a small state in a small region. These four counties and 11 communities spun together increases their, their powers, their, you know, ability to, to accomplish things. I could talk for hours about the accomplishments that we've seen in the Monfort's town communities. They've been able to leverage millions of dollars for even the smallest communities, um, to move forward. And it's our hope that if we can set this up in the four county region here, that we would, that success would be even more so because you guys are starting from a better place in terms of your assets, um, and the capacity you have in the communities. So, um, basically, if awarded, we would be focusing on the governance and the structure. We'd also be focusing on workforce, but from a qualitative standpoint instead of quantitative. So, um, adding free workforce training to frontline hospitality, um, employees and companies across the four county region. It's a Zing training in partnership with The Hive to create a better user experience for everyone. We also, um, want to focus on housing. NRG RDA did a great housing study for the four county region. Every community we go to thinks about housing being an issue. So, um, we are, uh, going to work with NRG RDA to have, build West Virginia applications for at least four communities. Working with West Virginia Brownfields for the five buildings program that would take place in three or four communities, and then working with, uh, Federal Home Loan Bank for some affordable housing programs. I, I can't promise we're gonna make housing happen, but we're gonna try to remove some of the barriers that we see for affordable market rate housing, um, in the community. So today I'm here, uh, with a, a two-fold request. The first would be, um, a letter of support. As I've said, we have commitment from eleven communities across the four county region. We have, uh, support from the Summers County Commission and the Raleigh County Commission. My coworker is currently at the Nicholas County Commission, but, um, we have, we're in conversations leading up to the meeting that's gonna be favorable, that they're in support. So the first request is, um, a, a letter of support, a very timely manner, because it's grants due tomorrow. The second is, um, we are asking for, um, a match commitment over the three-year grant. I recognize the Fayette County Commission has already invested significantly in this initiative. Um, and that's, we're not asking for match today or tomorrow. We would like to ask for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars over the next three years at a point that's convenient for you guys if awarded. There's a hundred percent match for this grant. Um, the, there's no possible way for us to line up all the match with our applications, and the hub is guaranteeing the match with our reserves. If awarded, then we'll start backfilling the match with other philanthropic partners. As I said, we, we do have financial support from Summers and Raleigh County. It's expected to come from Nicholas County as well. Um, the, the most pressing is the letter of support. If you guys are inclined to consider match, you know, we would obviously greatly appreciate that, but understand it's a big request. Um, hopefully I've kind of given you the gist of everything and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Uh, how long have you, this, this, how long has the, uh?
The hub?
Hub existed.
About fifteen years. We've been working in, in Fayette County for the last two and a half years. I personally have been working with Fayette County in the last two and a half years, and um, I'll just say, to see the partnership that's developed between Smithers, Montgomery, and Oak Hill, um, I don't do this very, but I've been told that's pretty remarkable, and we're seeing a lot of collaboration between those communities, and then to see Fayetteville, Ansted, and Gully Bridge, um, you know, join in really quickly, we also have, you know, Thurman, it's, it's exciting to see, um, the potential here.
So fifteen years, tell us about, okay, some of your accomplishments, what have you all accomplished?
We've worked in over a hundred communities, um, and the, the projects are, are nameless. I'm trying to think of some of the more local ones that, um, so in, in White Sulfur Springs, we helped with, um, a pump track, similar to what you guys just put in, um, uh, yeah, that Fayetteville put in, um, uh, bike trail planning also took place in, in White Sulfur Springs. We let the communities decide what they, you know, how they're gonna move things forward. Um, in Princeton, we were really instrumental in the redevelopment of Mercer Street, the Mercer Street Grassroots District. When we started working with Princeton in two thousand nine, um, there was maybe a couple buildings open, businesses open now. If you go to Mercer Street, it's, it's thriving. Uh, I live in Fairmont now, but lived in Richwood for quite a long time. I don't know if you've been to Richwood lately, but Richwood's been, um, a big community, this worked with the hub, and, uh, the impact there in, in twenty seventeen after the flood, Richwood didn't have any businesses open on Main Street. Started working with the hub, and in five years, over forty local businesses opened, and about eighty-five percent of those have been sustained. We've helped redevelop buildings in Petersburg. We were instrumental in the redevelopment of the four point five million dollar, thirty-two room hotel project. Um, our, our goals are always, um, to be led by the community, but, uh, to focus on capacity building and local leadership as well as community and economic development. I feel like when we give people the tools they need, um, they can make the success happen in their community and, uh, get some more people involved to, to help, um, you know, make a bigger impact.
What tools do you provide?
Really, it's just a lot of, um, knowledge and resource connections, so we say that we are, um, a great convener, so we bring together a lot of partners and partnerships. Um, Invest Appalachia, uh, Wholeville Redevelopment, um, we are working in, um, twenty-six counties in Southern West Virginia, a different program, um, with, uh, a ton of partners. I want to say that last year, our communities leveraged fifteen million dollars for individual projects, so we don't necessarily help communities write grants or get grants, but we connect them with the Grant Resource Center, provide them with a lot of opportunities to help fund the projects, um, we give them. Uh, let me also back up and say, any of the match that comes from the local communities will be reinvested back into that community. The grant itself will cover the hub's work and, you know, all of the technical assistance we're gonna provide. Any money that comes from the local communities will be put back, so that could be for signage, marketing, um, for, uh, assessments, you know, for housing to, uh, drill down further on the housing study, so, um, if you do commit any funding, it'll go right back into Fayette County and more. We have, uh, in this grant, we have built in a pool of a hundred thousand dollars of technical assistance funding for, of the projects that the communities determine, so, um, one of the goals will be for the NRG initiative to have, um, a strategic plan, and each of the individual communities to develop two to three strategic pathways for their community that would be in support of the strategic plan. So an example with that, um, Richwood, uh, went through a similar process with the strategic plan and created some out, some pathways along which was outdoor recreation through Monfort's Town. I just heard you guys talking about an AMLE grant. They were able to work with Monfort's Town, uh, to apply for an AMLE grant, more awarded one point four million dollars for their rail trail last year. So, um, really, we just kind of focus on project readiness and leadership and capacity to help get projects from ideation to implementation.
So what separates you, what's the difference between the hub and the NRG RDA?
NRG RDA is an economic development entity, they're totally focused on economic development. We're focused on community development that leads to economic development. So we feel like an engaged community and people being able to create opportunities and resources for themselves leads to economic development, and we've seen that time and time again in communities. We always work with the economic development authority in a community. We have a great relationship with NRG RDA, so, you know, we'll continue to work with them throughout this process, but, um, our goal is to, you know, engage the community more and build the individual capacity of, of individual leaders, so, um, you know, and if Fayette County's done like the Good News Fayette County events, and so like, we do things like that in our communities. We keep people informed and involved. People get involved in community initiatives when they know what's going on and they feel like there's an entry point for them, so, um, the more volunteer you have doing stuff in, in Fayette County, the better your county's gonna be, and so that's, you know, always one of our goals, is to help people um, with the resources, the knowledge they need to be, uh, contributing volunteers.
Commissioner Taylor, you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I do think we ought to, since the financial request isn't, um, time-sensitive, I think we ought to defer it to our October meeting when we hear all the other financial requests within the county. Um, but I do move that we approve the support letter.
One more thing. Is, is that a motion?
Yes. And what, I said I move that we support, approve the support letter.
I said the motion of the support letter. Okay, we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And in October, that's when we listen to other people who have requests for funds, uh, so we'll have you on that meeting.
I'll, I'll stay in touch, and that's all. Thank you for your support. Um, who will I talk to to get the, the letter?
We're working on her.
Yeah, we'll have it, um, Allison changed some words, sort of has to be printed, so.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if maybe you can do it right now, or you can go ahead and do it.
I can if you want, or you can email, whichever, so.
I made the edits that she had given in the email, but I know she, um, we were talking about the match, so we may change that footage.
Okay.
Yeah.
If you can leave that there, I believe you have that email.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, next is James Britt.
Yes, I'm here online today.
Okay.
And, uh, nice to see you again, Mr. Brenneman and Ms. Taylor. And I haven't had the opportunity, uh, Mr. Fernette, to tell you, congratulations on your appointment to Fayette County Commission. Um, if I'm able to share my screen, I have a few slides that I would like to present for you all today. Just a short presentation, only six slides. Did you all have an opportunity to review some of the stuff that I sent you in the packet?
Yes, we have.
I, I haven't. Um, we, I usually need to receive stuff a lot farther in advance. Yeah, I mean, we, we require two weeks' advance notice usually for materials, for things going on the agenda for a reason, because we all have jobs and
Right.
um, other, other board commitments and things like that that we do.
Well, um, I also have a more in-depth presentation that I gave, um, as part of my graduation from the Rural Investment Collaborative on this project, and I can go through that fourteen-slide presentation that would help, uh, give you a clearer view of the project if you didn't have a chance to read the materials. So I can give you that view now. Um, this is my presentation from the Rural Investment Collaborative. Our, uh, vision for the project that we're working on with Housed Up Incorporated is in Mount Hope, West Virginia. It's at this building located at one hundred Blue Stone Road in Mount Hope. Um, might, might look familiar to you, but our project overview for this is to combine housing, service providers, and employment opportunities all in one building. Our team is me, we, uh, we went with Dan Sneed for our architectural designs. Uh, Harper Engineering came in for our, uh, engineering assessments, and Kevin Jones at the Religious Coalition for Community Renewal is our fiscal sponsor on this project. Um, you guys already know some of the, uh, issues here in Fayette County, so I'm not gonna go into a really deep dive, but if you're interested in some of the numbers, I will say that in twenty nineteen, the Housing Development Fund did a housing needs assessment and found that Fayette County ranked forty-seventh out of fifty-five counties for housing conditions, and then there was just a recent assessment done that found a major need for housing in Fayette County, too. I think the whole New River Gorge region was found to have about a ninety-nine point five percent occupancy rate with housing needed in various income brackets. So Housed Up Incorporated conducted our own feasibility study in, um, twenty-four. Uh, and some of the things that we took away from this feasibility study was, uh, we, we did a survey with all participants that we could find, um, in Fayette and Raleigh County that were actively experiencing homelessness, and we found that transportation was a major barrier identified with every single person that submitted a survey. The majority of the people indicated that employment and housing were their dreams and aspirations from the future, and the majority also answered that food and shelter were their biggest daily challenges. Now, we scrubbed the data between Fayette and Raleigh County. The HMIS data, uh, in twenty twenty-four indicated twelve hundred people seeking assistance, seeking housing assistance through homeless services between Fayette and Raleigh County throughout that whole year. We currently are carrying an active list of about forty-five, uh, people that we're actively, uh, working with. But collective barriers for people call for collective solutions, so what we're talking about this project is a public-private partnership between Housed Up Incorporated and Hillbilly Harvest Company and Indoor Vertical Farm Company. This would combine housing, employment, and fresh food access all under one roof and kind of eliminating the need for transportation. And when I say service providers, Housed Up Incorporated will work with participants on a housing stability plan, that'll be our focus, but all other things outside of that will be brokered out of the community with services that already exist, like FMRS for behavioral health, uh, issues, Bright Life Mental Health and Recovery Services, works with us on life skills training, Jobs and Hope, uh, Deb Harris at Jobs and Hope has already indicated that she would help us with, uh, participants that wanted jobs that were off-site of our program, and Jay Phillips at Seed Sower has also indicated that he would help us with transportation on the program. Some of the other recovery residences that we work with right now do an intake on people, um, exiting recovery, um, without an exit plan, are Winds of Change and, uh, Family Option Providers is another person that we work with. We have various other people, um, that we are working with on this project. So just to kind of put it a little bit more in perspective, the project overview is kind of efficiency apartments, uh, shared living space, shared kitchen, shared living room, shared bathrooms, and a working environment here, and offices onsite for satellite, uh, satellite offices for service providers, and the possibility of some co-working spaces in there. So some of the sources and uses on the project, we already secured a fifty thousand dollar ARC Inspire Planning Grant to plan the project, so we've already paid for architectural designs, we've collected a statement of probable construction costs, we use these, this funding to complete the feasibility study and the engineering assessments, and we have some other programmatic trainings that are being afforded through that grant now. Um, we are seeking right now a Federal Home Loan Bank Affordable Housing Program Grant for one point five million dollars. It's due tomorrow. Um, we're working to secure the MOUs and, and finish the workbook and stuff on that now, but it is a reimbursement-only grant, so we will still need a bridge loan and construction loan on that, and one of the issues that we're running into with the Federal Home Loan Bank is where this is a mixed-use project. They won't cover the commercial rehabilitation, and they will also not even cover the commercial acquisition of that piece of the building. So I had to work with the architects to figure out what piece of that building, what, what percentage it is. The Federal Home Loan Bank advised us that we had to subtract that amount from the acquisition cost and come up with it on our own. That piece of the building is, um, seventeen point thirty-nine percent, I think we come up with in the workbook, but it's about seventy thousand dollars what we're short on the acquisition cost of the building. Um, this, these are some of the architectural designs that we have, uh, from the architect. Those were included in the packet there, if you wanna check those out in more detail. All three floors, so it'd be three floors residential on one side, and then the indoor farm for the workforce development opportunities in the one-story side of the building. We do have, uh, project estimates to show our ability to service the debt on loans moving forward on this project. Um, and that's all really that I have for that. I had another smaller, uh, presentation, too, that goes into more detail about what we do at Housed Up Incorporated, um, but do you have any questions about the project that we're talking about?
Yes, I do. Uh, how much money have you secured to date? Uh, I'd see where you've, you've got listed thirty thousand dollars on the City of Mount Hope, and you want money from the Fayette County Commission. How much have you already secured?
So, so far, we have only secured the ARC Inspire Planning Grant. I've talked to Mayor Kessinger at the City of Mount Hope, and they're going to present it to City Council on August the seventeenth, but he seemed pretty confident that he would be able to help us out with it through their opioid settlement funds, since our focus is people that are exiting recovery that don't have an exit plan, which categorizes them as homeless.
The amount of that grant was?
Excuse me?
The amount that you've secured the grant, how much?
Fifty thousand.
You've secured fifty thousand dollars right now?
Yes, sir.
Is the project, well, that's the old, uh, IMSA building, one hundred Blue Stone Road, Mount Hope, is the old IMSA building in Mount Hope, West Virginia. It's a large building, and they, they came because I think IMSA has moved over to the Mine Academy in Beaverton with their renovations, so it's been abandoned for what, now about five, four years?
I think, oh, close to a deck. I think, oh, close to a decade, I think, sir.
Yeah, I'm not thinking of that long. For about four or five years, it's been abandoned. And you've been in it, and if you're gonna rehab it, they're gonna use it for housing?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, part of it to grow food and to sustain the
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Did I, did I say that was a garden or something?
It's an indoor farm. Currently, Hillbilly Harvest Company has an indoor aquaponics facility in Kermit, West Virginia, and they are working with Fett County Schools right now. Um, they had done some deliveries to Fett County Schools already, but essentially, yes, we would wanna take people that were exiting recovery that don't, that didn't know where they were going to go, that didn't have a plan, move them in here and hire them on the farm to grow food for the school systems and, uh, other, other potential buyers that we could line up for Hillbilly Harvest Company.
So what you're proposing is to use people that live there to work at the farm, basically, with the garden that you have. And how do you, how do you propose to maintain?
The building will have a resident board of directors that will be comprised of two-thirds of the resident and one-third service providers.
So where's the funding from? So you get this up and running, everything's good, you've got a full capacity, they're working in the garden, they're doing their thing. How do you keep, there's major maintenance on a building of that size, major maintenance. How do you propose to maintain the maintenance?
Rental payments.
From?
They will pay, th- they will be paying their own rent. Um, they'll most likely be having access to some um, rental supports when they first come in, but they will be expected to be paying their own rent. That's one of the things. They'll agree to two things. There will be two stipulations before they can move in, and one will be that at some point in time, they'll be agreeing that they're gonna be paying their own rent. It don't have to be today. They don't maybe necessarily know today how that's gonna happen, but that'll be something that we work on. And then number two, they have to agree to a minimum of one visit a week from our housing counselor to work on a housing stability plan. As long as they'll agree to those two things, then they can move in.
So you're looking at a one point five million dollar investment to start this whole thing going?
Yes, sir. And, uh, I've been working with, uh, Katie Kiefer at Raleigh County or at the Religious Coalition for Community Renewal, our fiscal sponsor on the project. We've been working on the, uh, financial workbook for this. And if you would like some more detailed numbers, and if you would like to see the architectural, um, cost estimates and things that we got from Dan Sneed and all that, I can include all that documentation in a follow-up as well.
How many residents do you think you're gonna have?
I think that we could get to fifty pretty quick. The, um, we're projecting to have the building ready sometime in July of twenty-twenty-six and to start bringing in people at a rate of ten people a month until it's full sometime in late November or December of twenty-six. That's our expected occupancy rate.
Is, is this a plan for permanent housing for people or temporary housing, transitional housing?
So, it's, I guess it falls into somewhat of a gray area because it's long-term. They could technically live here as long as they wanted to, but the programming in the building is designed for them to move on to their long-term housing, uh, scenario, but there is no timeframe really on how long that could take, because depending on what their barriers are, it could take eight months, it could take twenty-four months, it could take a few years. It just depends on what their barriers are and, and, and what their goals are and, and objectives are in their long-term, uh, housing stability plan.
Have you had any public meetings in Mount Hope to discuss with the public what they feel about the project?
I have not, no.
Location of the building is in Mount Hope. It's actually in within the city limits, it's right there, off of Main Street, uh, on the back street, Blue Stone Road comes off of Main Street, but that, and it's heavily, uh, there's a heavy residence around it.
Yes.
And you've had no public meetings to discuss with them what you're planning to do and what the public's feedback would be?
I've talked to the mayor about it, and, uh, the mayor seems to think that the people in the town would be okay with it, but I have not no pursuit of public meeting. But it doesn't, that, that doesn't mean that I would not be open to it.
You, did you just say that you would not be open to a public forum?
I did, no, I said that does not mean that I would not be open to it.
Oh, okay. Well, you cut out a little bit.
No, 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 I, I would definitely be open to it because, uh, I, I, I don't want it to be a surprise on everybody. I don't want it to be a bombshell. I do want, I do want the community to support this project and, you know, in the long term.
Well, if you were listening to our meeting earlier, um, I made comment, and so did Commissioner Taylor, that in October is when we look at people who are meeting funding. Is this something that can wait until October?
The grant is due tomorrow, so, um, it could, but we would like a l- letter if possible today, if that could be possible, but if not, I understand that it's short notice and that we kind of just sprung this on you. Um, and that I have been talking to the mayor in Mount Hope about it a lot more often, but it is being planned in the town of Mount Hope. Uh, so I do apologize once again for springing this on you on such short notice.
You, you also have in your, in your packet here, a, a backup plan in case opioid settlement fund cannot be reached, and you're looking at loans, right?
Yes.
And if you, if we would push this back to October, if you were to secure a loan and it would, uh, satisfy the, the requirement for the grant, could always be, the loan could always be repaid if the commission should decide that we would support your project.
So the, we just have to have the grant submitted by tomorrow. We don't even find out if we secure the funds till December the eleventh of this year. And then from there, we'd be able to, now it's reimbursement only, so we would have to start making the connections for the drawdowns and, uh, the percentages on the loans that you need for the reimbursement is something that you can add into the grant, so I've ta- I've talked to some CDFIs to get a grasp on what those percentages will be, but all those have been added into our financial workbook, too. So we're anticipating, uh, the possibility of having to do it in loans.
So what is your immediate ask of the county commission today?
If we would be able to get a letter of support stating that, uh, they would commit fifty thousand dollars to our project contingent on us getting a grant award on December the eleventh.
Do you have a support letter draft? Because typically, that's what we require, is that we get a draft and then we, we vote on whether to sign it.
Yes, ma'am. I submitted a draft, um, to the assistant to the Fett County Commission, and I can also submit another draft to whomever you would wish.
Okay.
If we, this time, we have, we have a, a draft of the letter.
It, is it in that packet? Because I didn't see it in our packet.
It was in the email.
That might be the one you couldn't open, Allison.
It was. I'm re-drafting.
Oh, right, because that, that's the one I emailed you about that I couldn't open yesterday. Okay.
Uh, I have one other question.
Yes.
How much does this one cost you yearly to operate?
So the utility overhead, I think we came up with around a hundred and ninety-two, close to two hundred thousand dollars a year overhead with utility expenses and everything. One major cost on that building is gonna be, it used to be on a gas and electric fire generator, and replacing that thing alone is gonna be two hundred thousand dollars just in itself. But I mean, when you're talking about growing food and having a bunch of residents in one spot, you, if something happens, you kind of want that generator.
If, if, you're, you're saying it's operated, the power is operated off of a generator?
The back of the building had a gas powered with some electric-powered generator. I'm not sure exactly how it works, uh, because it's not there anymore. It's currently not there. The engineers were telling us, uh, about it when they came and did their assessment.
So, I just wanna be clear. So this, this housing project is specifically, is it targeted to, to homeless people in general or only people in recovery?
So technically, they would be considered homeless. Um, I've been working with the West Virginia Coalition in homelessness pretty closely with determining which people exiting recovery residences are technically considered homeless or just at risk of homeless, but these would be targeting people that would be exiting recovery residences or sober living facilities with no exit plan that would be exiting into homelessness otherwise. And, uh, bringing them here to work on a stability plan with them outside of that.
But it would not be providing housing to homeless who are not in recovery. Is that right?
Possibly some would. We had talked about doing some permanent supportive housing for people with severe behavioral health needs and things like that. And permanent supportive housing is a little bit different, but overall, what most of the units will be towards people that are exiting recovery, yes.
For the people who are exiting recovery, are you gonna do some type of testing to make sure they're not using again?
No. Um, our focus is their housing and income stability. If at any time at part, as part of their housing stability plan, um, that is, uh, at jeopardy, their income or housing, then that'll be a conversation that we have. And we're gonna offer satellite offices for SUD providers and behavioral health providers and other providers to meet their clients where they're at in our housing. So if they want to conduct classes there or anything else like that, they're, they'll be at liberty to do so on the premise.
Mr. Taylor, any other questions?
Just a second. Um, Ruth has forwarded that letter that I couldn't open, so if I could just have a minute to, to look at it. It had a weird file extension and I couldn't, all I had is my phone, so I couldn't, wasn't able to open it.
I apologize for that. It's in a dot ODS format, I think, because I use Open Office instead of Microsoft Office.
Yeah. Um, so, John, can we, can we defer this? Uh, I'd actually like to discuss this along with the other items in executive session, because I have some legal questions about it.
Good, so do I. So do I. All right, so at this point in time, uh, uh, make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the Housed Up Harper Project and the West Virginia American Water APA.
We have legal advice on those topics.
Legal advice on those topics, thank you.
Yes, and the, and the New River Health Purchase Agreement, John.
Okay. Okay, we're back from our executive meeting, um, and there was no decisions made while we were there. First thing, I would like to make a motion not to support the Harper Project. I second the motion. Have a mo- have a motion to second on the floor. All those in favor?
And I'd like to say, you know, Mr. Burke, we're just gonna need a lot more notice and more information to make an investment, um, including a credibility investment in a project like that. I know you've been through us before, but there are just a lot of outstanding questions of people that I don't think are in the loop that should be, including, um, the director of our health department, who is over, um, you know, who is the county leader in these, uh, recovery issues. So, um, that's, that's where we're coming from on that. We just don't have enough information.
Understood. Is there any way that I could follow up with more information for Fett County Commission at a later date?
Absolutely, and I do, and I do think you ought to start having meetings. If you start with Terri Harland at the health department, she'll ensure you have meetings with others. Um, she is the one we put over our, um, working group for the opioid funding, so just the fact that, you know, she hadn't heard, you know, and, and not everybody's gonna know who's who and what's what, of course, but, um, you know, she's a good place to start, because if you're gonna want, um, to benefit from opioid funding, you would have to have her recommendation.
And her name's Terri Harland?
Mm-hmm, T E R I Harland. She's the director of the Fett County Health Department. If you just call the health department, I'm sure they could put you through to her and she'll get back in touch with you.
Okay.
May I add that you also maybe, uh, have some town meetings with the town of Mount Hope, the public, and, and work with the town of Mount Hope, work with the public of Mount Hope, you know, to find what they have, uh, to say about it.
Absolutely. I'll, um, work on doing those things and, uh, get back with the county commission on some updates as soon as I'm able to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for hearing me today.
Um, Michael?
Yes.
Uh, first would be new or health purchase agreement?
Um, all right, so a few meetings back, uh, the commission authorized me to enter into negotiations for the purchase of the Scarborough New River Health Association Building located at nine oh eight Scarborough Road. Uh, uh, we entered into those negotiations and we made an offer, uh, and they accepted it, uh, for a purchase price of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And as a result, we, uh, drafted a purchase agreement, um, and we wanna, uh, proceed to closing. And so what I need for the commission to do today is the purchase agreement that I prepared, um, I would need for you all to, um, I guess, vote to, uh, approve the draft as is currently written to be shared to New River Health and their council, um, for any, for signature and/or any potential edits and changes. It's pretty standard, typical real estate purchase agreement. I don't anticipate any issues with it on their end. And then secondarily, in connection with this purchase agreement, to authorize, um, Paul Clay's office to do the closing, uh, for this property and to go ahead and get that scheduled on the books. So those, that would be, i- if there's any questions, I can answer them about this, but, um, pretty straightforward real estate purchase.
I don't believe there's any questions. Uh, I, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the purchase agreement for the old New River Health building in Scarborough and to authorize Paul Clay to do the closing.
And can we just add to authorize the county administrator to take whatever action she needs to do to get that closing scheduled?
I am that.
Good with that, Ruth? And, and amended, uh, and to authorize the county administrator to do whatever needed for the claim. Second, we have a motion to prompt the move in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next is the, um, asset purchase agreement with West Virginia American Water for the purchase of certain aspects of the Armstrong PSD, the Cawfals PSD, and the Paesken Cape, uh, PSD. Um, this has been something that has been before the commission many a times, this, um, not the APA, but the issue regarding the potential sale of these, um, aspects of these PSDs, and in conjunction with that, um, an asset purchase agreement was prepared and negotiated over months with West Virginia And in conjunction with that, an asset purchase agreement was prepared and negotiated over months with West Virginia American Water. We finally reached a version of the asset purchase agreement that I think is agreeable to the county. At least from my perspective, it, it, it provides for appropriate protections to the county related to grant and loan repayments that may, that there may be obligations. It also puts forth certain clauses that relates to issues related to Cannleton Haller and, and other things, as well as negotiates a phase in of the base rates of, you know, any, any potential rate increase, there's a phase in related to that. And other than that, it's otherwise a pretty standard asset purchase agreement for PSDs that have been presented before the PSC and approved. So because we have reached a point where the negotiations have finalized, we've got a draft that appropriately protects the county and provides multiple safety nets for the county related to this deal. I would recommend that the county vote to approve and sign the asset, asset purchase agreement with the West Virginia American Water for those PSDs. And once they do that, at a subsequent meeting, we'll take additional actions as required by law to finalize potential dissolutions of, of the PSD subject to this asset purchase agreement. I can of course answer any and all questions that you all may have regarding this asset purchase agreement.
Michael, even though there's a potential signing or not signing, it still has to be approved. Through
Yep, good, yes. Let me clarify that point for you. So what has to happen is, you know, the signing of this document is what would probably be considered phase one of a long closing process. And so what has to happen is, once this is signed, West Virginia American Water would have to sign it. I, I have every confidence in the world that this is a finalized APA, that they will make no additional changes to this because this was their final proposed version and they indicated that they agree with this version. So once this document's signed, then it has to go through various approvals from other institutions. So one is the, the Public Service Commission has to review this sale, look at it, do what the Public Service has, commission has to do with it in order that, on a joint application, that this sale is appropriate and, and whatnot. Additionally, there, there may be other waivers, agreements and consents that have to be obtained for this sale. That would include, you know, if there's bonds on the property, bondholders may have to approve the sale and things like that. And then there may also be additional environmental approvals, DEP approvals, you know, permit, permitting, changing approvals and things like that. All of those things have to occur before this sale can close. So while we sign this, we've signed this document today, the closing on this is not going to occur for many, many, many months. And so this is kind of the first phase of that process. Does that kind of answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay.
However, in some cases where a PSC may not fight it, West Virginia American Water could come in potentially early.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, and that would be something that the PSC could order and, and things like that. So that's, that, that could happen as well.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Taylor, any questions?
No, thank you.
Well, just to clarify with the, with the public, I, I just want to make a statement here, it's not a question, it's a statement. There were many loans, there were grants, there were a lot of other unknown things that we had to deal with. We, we, we don't apologize, but we did take our due diligence. I did want to commend Commissioner Taylor, Commissioner Brenneman for their due diligence into getting to the root of everything, not just taking upon someone's word that this happened or this didn't happen. It took quite a while and I think we're as close as we can get to what we understand to be what we really need to do, the truth of the matter. So I, I mean, it has taken quite a while, but we don't apologize. We do take our due diligence in doing what we do when it concerns the public and where it's hard to comply.
So at this point, my, my request would be that a motion's made to approve the finalized version of the asset purchase agreement and authorized signature by the Commissioner Brenneman as the county commission president of that document.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, the second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to dismiss.
Aye.
To dismiss? Did we hit everything?
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Okay, all right, second. Bye, everybody.